Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here, wishing to turn out tonight to learn more about this forum and the candidates running. My name is Patrick Baker and I serve as the Vice President at Greater Mankato Growth. For those of you that don't know our organization, Greater Mankato Growth serves as the Regional Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development for the Greater Mankato area. And I am pleased to be your moderator this evening. Again, thank you all for attending and I want to thank our candidates attending this evening's forum and those that are vying for Blue River County Board of Commissioners. I want to thank MSU for hosting this this evening and KTV for recording the event as well. For those of you interested in rewatching the forum or sharing with your various networks and social media, it will be available online at KTV's website after this event and will appear on KTV's channels on Charter and on Solidarity Communications numerous times from now until Election Day. Before I address some housekeeping items, I want to let you know that next week we'll be doing sort of our second pre-primary forum for our local races and that would be for the city of Mankato, for offices, for city council, and for mayor. And it will be a little bit more of a crowd. Next week, I think, there'll be about 10 candidates running for all of the open seats for Mankato, so that should be an interesting event to attend. That will take place next week, Wednesday, same time, same place, in the same room. So with that, let's kick off our forum here. A few expectations for our audience to help us present an engaging and civil dialogue this evening. We have more questions than we have time for, so we ask you to help us make the most of our time by holding your applause and, you know, no hooting, hollering, heckling, especially the moderator. It looks like a nice crowd, so I think we'll be okay there. This evening's format is as follows: Each candidate will be allowed two minutes to make opening and closing remarks, and then candidates will be allowed 90 seconds to respond to questions. And so I will hold candidates approximately to 90 seconds, but this evening we're more interested in engaging in a robust discussion and getting these candidates to engage and have a dialogue on the issues that are important to Blue River County. So it may take longer in some instances, and that's okay. And any follow-up questions will be at my discretion. And now it is my pleasure to introduce the candidates running in the primary, to serve as Blue River County Commissioner for the First District, Katie Boone in the center, Tamara Marie Hansen to my left, and Colleen Langkimer all the way at the end. I also want to mention that Vance Gerrenberg, who is running for reelection in the Second District, wanted to join us this evening, but he had another commitment and was able to attend, so he sends his regards. Now, let's do our applause at the beginning and at the end here and thank our candidates for being here. And then we'll start with mostly in statements, and Tamara, let's start with you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, I first want to thank everybody for being here and taking out the time. It shows that you care about your local government and your community, so I appreciate that. Thanks for coming out. I'm Tamara Hansen. I have been in the historical Lincoln Park neighborhood, District One, for 15 years, raising my three boys, Kyle, Logan, and Nathan. We've enjoyed our community that we've built together. I'm on several boards right now: Community Corrections Advisory Board, the Mental Health Task Force. I'm the Vice President of the Optimist Club, and I've enjoyed every one of those positions and I've learned a lot. I've also taken the community, Blue River County's class that they had. That was very informative, and I have a much better appreciation for what everybody in the county does.
Katie?
I'm not sure if this thing's going to pick me up. I do talk loud. So hello, everybody. I'm Katie Boone. I'm running for Blue River County Commissioner in District One, as you all know. Over the last 17 years, I've been working towards enhancing the quality of life in all of the work that I've done, in areas from healthcare, food, affordable housing, transportation, childcare, serving people with disabilities, health and human services, and prioritizing the needs of underserved populations. Some examples of my work are, at my time at United Way, I was a part of helping build the First Steps Collaborative, which was bringing together public health, affordable housing, healthcare providers, and early childhood programs to create a system that met the needs of families from prenatal to age three. To this day, that system's currently serving over 180 families in Blue River County. Another example of my work was providing service and support to a veterans' organization that was providing EMDR therapy to veterans returning back with PTSD. And part of that work was working to try and enhance connections among service providers and be able to connect veterans to the services that they needed to be able to deal with the PTSD. That work led to national policy change within the VA and making sure that EMDR therapy was accessible to all veterans across the country. So when you're asking me, like, "What's up with today? Why are you here? Why are you running?" Across all of my career, I've been working at the intersections of nonprofit government and business. I'm a small business owner myself. I'm running on the issues that I think matter most to the folks that I've been connecting with. Along the campaign trail, a couple of people I've heard from, some old friends and some new, have talked a lot about the need for advocacy, and I'm feeling the need that we need to bring more community health workers into Blue River County as a service system. I also feel that another area that Blue River County could help get some more strength in going around is around economic vitality and strengthening partnerships at a local, regional, statewide, and national level. So when I think about economic vitality, I'm looking at what Blue River County is doing within childcare, affordable housing, and transportation. So I'm excited to be here tonight. I'm excited to see a full house of some familiar faces and some new, and I'm excited to bring a new voice and a new perspective. Again, I'm Katie Boone, running for Blue River County, District One, and I would love your support on August 14th and November 6th.
Thank you, Katie. Colleen?
Well, I'm Colleen Langkimer, and I want to thank Greater Mankato Growth for putting this together and for you all coming. I mean, it means a lot that you care enough to come and hear what we have to say. Mankato's always been my home. The Council Academy, Mankato State, married my husband, Jack. We have three lovely sons, John, Mike, and Pat. They're married to Mandy, Laura, and Missy, and we have five grandchildren. And that's why I'm running. I want this to be the best place ever for my grandchildren and all the children and people who live in Blue River County. When I think about our community, I think about how we come together. And a good example of that is the meningitis outbreak that we had quite a few years ago. For those of you who weren't here for it, what happened was, all of a sudden, at West High School, some students started coming down with meningitis. We didn't know why, and we didn't know how to fix it. So Michael Osterholm, who was a state epidemiologist, and I was on the State Board of Health, the two of us were the face and the voice of, in Blue River County, to talk about this and try to alleviate fears, because it was scary. Kids were sick. We actually lost one child to die, and we didn't know why it was happening. So we inoculated everybody at West. Then we inoculated students who had had some interaction with students at West. In the end, we ended up inoculating the whole county and all of Mankato. It ended. We still don't know why it happened, but we were successful in taking care of it. And I saw this community come together to figure out how we were going to save our children. How are we going to work together? We're scared, but we know that we need to find an answer. And so it was a great example of this community caring about each other and taking care of each other and supporting each other through this process. So that's what I think of when I think of this community and the difference they make to each and every one of us, was the spirit that brought us together and helped create an effective way to work together and deal with that meningitis outbreak. I'm running to help create effective solutions across the board in Blue River County. I think it's important. I think we need to work together, and from my perspective, it's all about partnerships. None of us can do it ourselves. We need each other. I've built partnerships, collaborations, and advocacy among private, public, nonprofits, philanthropic, and elected officials throughout my career. When I worked for Congressman Tim Penny as a congressional staffer, when I was a Blue River County Commissioner, when I was President of the Association of Minnesota Counties, which is all 87 counties in this state, and later I was President of the National Association of Counties, which is 3,069 counties in this nation. I also was the State Director for the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development, which dealt with businesses, with energy, with home loans, with broadband, local foods, and community programs, be it libraries, hospitals, daycare centers. I've learned a lot through my years. I think I have a lot more to give. I understand the nexus between economic development, the arts, and community development. You need all of that to build a healthy region. I'm a team player. I'm energetic. I'm enthusiastic. I'm experienced. I'm effective and committed, and I'm asking for the opportunity to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Thank you all for your fantastical do-say, because I remember vividly the inoculation from meningitis. That sounds like school dish right now. So that's, there's no way you forget. Let's start with the first question, and Tamara, we'll start with you, go on the line, and then we'll start alternating as we go here. First question: What is the most significant issue facing Blue River County, and how would you address it?
I think one of the, which I found out in door-knocking, is that people don't really know what a county commissioner does. I think that's a problem. They also weren't aware of sex trafficking that we have in the state of Minnesota and southern half of Minnesota, and I think that's a problem. We have youth here that need attention, that need our attention. They need our support. They need some more programs so that they can successfully grow as successful adults. Our school system is, you know, the Special Education Department needs our attention and deserves our attention as well. The teachers are drowning. They don't have enough paraprofessionals in their classrooms, and we need to support them. They need to, we need to give the teaching part back to them. I know that I very well, because I managed and recruited over 50 paraprofessionals for the school district alone last year. I had the teachers and principals begging me for help, so that is something that I feel very passionate about. I also believe that our transit needs attention. There's a lot of people that want to work that can't get to work, and they need their self-worth back, and we need to, you know, make sure that everybody can get to work and earn their own paychecks and be proud of themselves. I also want to talk about childcare. We have a lack of childcare. Thirty-eight percent, 37 percent has declined since 2011, and we don't, we have a lot of people that are at home that can't work because they don't have quality childcare to bring their children to. Those are some of my topics I feel very strongly about. Thank you.
Katie, what's the most significant issue facing Blue River County at the moment?
Well, it's hard to say what the most significant one is, because it depends on who you talk to. But in just looking at some of the data and the statistics that we have on Blue River County through Minnesota Compass, it's shown that 15% of the population is living below poverty in Blue River County. And one of the things that Blue River County was recently told in their most recent board meeting is this economic vitality piece is an area of strengthening the work of the county. The county's ran really well. There's a lot of good fiduciary responsibility that the administration's doing well. And so when we look at economic vitality, we have to look at it in a multi-perspective way, from the young families that need childcare assistance to the childcare provider that wants to get a grant or a loan to be able to expand slots, to the small business that needs support with being able to purchase their building, to being able to connect and support underserved populations to the services that they need so that they can thrive. And I think what resonates for me most is that when we look at economic vitality, it looks at all people. And I come from a personal perspective and background of having been a teen mom and having been on different public forms of assistance in the past that I needed in order to be able to pursue my college degree, that I needed to be able to pursue the careers I wanted to be able to be a part of in helping to build and create a community that I wanted to see where everybody had a chance to thrive. And so for me, when I'm hearing from folks on the streets and the door-knocking and all of the campaigning, is there's a lot of folks that are getting lost in the gap and in the cracks. And what I think a really important thing for us to look at as a county is, what is it going to take for us to really enhance economic vitality as a region and have a holistic perspective on what that will take in being able to create the social infrastructure as well as the public infrastructure that's needed to do that?
I actually think Tamara and Katie have hit on so many issues that counties do, and depending on the day, that's the most important issue. So it's really important to be interested and engaged in all of those issues, because that's what makes our community thrive and grow. It's really the building of partnerships, from my perspective. Nobody can do everything, but together we can do it. And so partnership, partnership, partnership. What relationships do you need to build? Who do you have to talk to? Is it in the county? Is it at the state? Is it at the federal level? Is it across the country? What can we learn from other people that are doing good things, and what can we take home? You know, when you talk about the addiction problem, because it's a huge problem, and we talk a lot about opiates. Opiates continue to be about two-thirds of the deaths that happen with that type of thing, but alcohol's the worst, and meth's just going sky-high. So how do we deal with that and make sure that we're working with the hospitals, the clinics, the physicians, the pharmaceuticals? But also, what else is going on in this nation that we can learn from? Kentucky's doing a pilot in their jail where they're using Hazleton and prescription drugs to try to get people clean, and it's a contained experiment, because nobody can get out. So, you know, looking at some of those options that are going on in the country and bringing them home, that's what I've always done as a county commissioner. I did statewide issues. I lobbied. I advocated in the state and at the federal level, and that's what we need to do.
Thank you, Colleen. So I want to talk, kind of, one more overarching question. We'll get into some of these particular policy areas that you all have raised that are really important ones. But, you know, recently, we saw in the news that the county's working on putting together its budget for the coming year, and, you know, that budgeting and setting those property tax rates is one of the most important things that the county commissioner fulfills. And so how do you propose balancing the needs and sort of the strategic investments that need to be made throughout the county, but also keeping that lid on property taxes? And Katie will start with you on that, and then we'll go to Colleen and then to Tamara.
Awesome. I'm not going to pretend to know everything that there is to know about the county budget. I have a lot to learn, and I know that the administration is one that I would trust wholeheartedly. They've been doing a great job fiduciarily, if that's even a word, to kind of track and monitor the numbers and be able to make some really well-timed decisions. And so for me, when I look at, like, the relationship between what the county commissioners are doing related to property taxes and balancing that with the needs of the budget and balancing that with the needs of the people, I would rely on the team to help support that, and I would also want to be able to bring in the voices of the people that are impacted by the budget decisions. A recent example would be some work that I recently did with North Mankato. They had a small pot of resources available to try and figure out how to invest back into the community and what the citizens wanted to see happen with that. And we were able to use a citizen engagement process that helped the citizens have a voice in that process. Now, when it comes to property taxes, that's a little bit different, right? Like, there's things that you have to do as a county commissioner and as a state-regulated agency to be able to meet those needs. And I would say we'd want to try and do it in a balanced way that is efficient and effective and brings in as much voices and perspective as possible and make the best decision for the common good.
Well, I've put together a lot of budgets over my years, both at the county level and at the United States Department of Agriculture. An interesting tidbit that most people don't think about, when we look at property taxes in Blue River County, 36.24% of our dollars come from property taxes. You've got state, federal, you've got a transportation tax, and you've got a charge for services. So when you think of the budget as a whole, 36% comes from property taxes, and I think that gets lost with most people. I think you really have to look at, what services do you have to provide? What unfunded mandates do you have to fulfill? That's something you have no options on. You have to do it. What are the needs of the community? And I agree with Katie. Bob and the crew do a great job of bringing that together. The county board looks at the numbers, looks at what needs to be done, and then makes decisions as to staffing from information and what the levy will be and what new construction there is, which, when you talk about a 6% levy increase, half of that is new construction, which really doesn't make a difference. It goes down to 3%. So, you know, and you also have to look towards the future. You can't just plan for today. You have to look at, what do you need to do in the future? And my example is the Justice Center. We built that, we were planning on building a jail, and we started to save 10 years before we were ever going to build it. We also went to learn the best way to build a jail, how much staffing do you need, what types of thing did you need. When I was President of the National Association of Counties, every state I went to, they were showing me new jails that they had built, and we could learn from that. I could bring it home, and they could have a personal connection. So you really have to look long-term in a budget. We went to a biennial budget during the time I was on the board. We'd always done a one-year budget. Two-year gives you a plan, and longer than that, you have to look out, too. So, I mean, budgeting's challenging, but it's something that's really important, and you really have to be thoughtful and get a lot of input, as much as you can. Most people don't choose to come to truth and taxation meetings, but it's really important. So that's how I see a budget coming together.
Thank you.
Well, I think that, as both of these candidates here have said, the local budget is, you know, I have in front of me here from this year and proposed for next year, and like I would use my team, they've been doing this for many, many years. They've got the experience. I trust their, you know, I've been over this budget. I agree with the budget, and I think that, you know, you have to listen to the community. What are the community needs? Bring it to the board. Talk about what are those needs, how much that's going to cost, how to break it down, where it needs to be put. And I do have a lot to learn, like Katie, about, you know, the budgeting, the local budget here for our county. So I'd say I would, you know, listen to my team and learn and just research and throw myself in there.
Perfect. Thanks, Tamara. Let's go to the next question here. So a few of you have brought up this issue of childcare, and actually, I know Colleen and I were at an event today when we were talking about that, that issue and sort of some regional approaches to that, but the piece that stuck out was that, based on some of the data that one of your musicians put in the event on had sort of probably, they arrived at a figure of Blue River County's shortfall in childcare slots. And basically, their assessment is that figure is just shy of 1,000 slots that we did campaigns for for preschool-age children in Blue River County. And that has become a problem in Mankato as well as the rural communities in Blue River County in particular as it relates to the in-home childcare providers. We've seen some of this in the news. You know, it's not an area that the county has been particularly involved in, other than from the licensing standpoint for these in-home providers, but we haven't really done a lot by way of sort of public funding and financing, et cetera, but a little bit. But I'm curious to hear your thoughts on how the county should be looking at this issue and any more steps they should be taking to get into this fix. And I think we can start with Colleen on that.
Well, it was a really interesting meeting, and there are resources out there for daycare that need, more people need to know about. I'm really proud of the county. They have put together a financing tool for cities outside of Mankato. Not that Mankato doesn't need it to, but it's a good first step to help those daycares. When I was at USDA Rural Development, we used to fund daycares, and especially in smaller places, you lose one family and all of a sudden you don't cash flow, and that's a problem. So I'm proud that the county has stepped up to try to fund some childcare centers or in-home families. I just think, I look at, I look at my three sons. We have three sons, five grandchildren. Both spouses have to work, and those kids need good, quality daycare and affordable. So I think when we look at partnerships, I go back to partnerships every time, the county, the city, the initiative fund, First Families, there's a bunch of people out there who are really interested in investing in affordable and good childcare, and I think we need to really look at something like that. Now, today at the meeting, I was sitting next to a woman who's looking at putting a daycare downtown Mankato. She's, could be licensed for 139 kids. That's a lot. Another woman who is looking at putting one in another section of town, I sit on the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership, which is doing the piece behind Cub Foods on Lamp Street. So it's affordable housing. It is supportive housing. It's childcare and daycare, and it's green space, and it's available for all the amenities around there. So there's some really good things going on. The trick is, how do you build those partnerships and how do you help each other and who can do what? Who can leverage dollars here and who can leverage dollars there, and how do we bring them together? Thank you.
Well, currently, the county has 109 licensed providers, which is that has to serve 1,290 children. I think we need to bring it, you know, this, there's a lot of people that don't want to be a provider because of the state regulations, and they're so strict, and how many cups of, you know, Jell-O do you have in the fridge opposed to how many kids do you have? All those little nitpicking things, I think we, you know, in the future could bring it more local so that we can have some guidelines that we can, you know, share with the state and help regulate those so that people, you know, want to be, you know, a childcare provider. I think for myself, too, an experience that I've had is that I have a son with autism, and I couldn't find a daycare that would take him, and that was very difficult for me in wanting to have a job, wanting to support my family, and that's also a need that's being overlooked very largely. Many families, you know, that I've advocated for, we're in the same boat, and it was, you know, not, it wasn't pleasant not being able to, you know, go get the job I wanted, because I, nobody would take him. There is a lack of child support. A gal I worked with is pregnant now. She's worried. She's like, "I have no idea where I'm going to, you know, have my children in a good daycare", you know? So I think we need to work together, and we need to, you know, kind of promote togetherness, like Colleen keeps saying, being promotive about people opening up their daycares and not being afraid to do it and support one another.
Yeah. Childcare's a beast.
It is.
It's a lot of stuff going on in childcare. You've got to look at it in a lot of different ways. In Blue River County, Niccolat County, we have a lot of family, friend, and neighbor care providers, so it's informal childcare that's happening. And then you've got issues of concerns around quality. You've got issues of concerns around affordability, and you've got issues of concerns around how does a childcare provider be able to keep a business going when it's a three-legged stool? I used to be on the First Children's Finance Advisory Board for the state, and we would review applications from childcare centers from rural communities throughout southern Minnesota, and a lot of the things that they wanted to be able to do to grow and expand required a kind of partnership model, like we've all been saying. And so I think one of the things that we need to be able to do is look at some innovative models for what's been happening around childcare, look at ways to be able to address it as a workforce issue. If families can't provide, if they don't have childcare, they can't work, or else they're working and tag-teaming first shift, second shift, third shift, or passing it off to the neighbor, or grandma, or a sister, or a brother, or younger sibling who's in charge of all of that. And so if we really want to talk about early childhood and childcare as a priority in our area, we have to come at it in a whole bunch of different perspectives that are need to be brought into that discussion. So I think we've got a lot of opportunities, and one of the things that I'm really excited about that Blue River County's done recently is the forgiveness loan program for a childcare center, and the Eagle Lake family that just got a chance to expand and add additional slots because they were able to put up a fence, right? And so a small, little bit goes a long way to create a bigger... And so a small little bit goes a long way to create a bigger impact. And I think it's that kind of problem solving and creative problem solving that's going to be able to help us address this need as a workforce issue, as a community issue, because I know it sounds cheesy and very cliche, but children are our future. And that we have to have that long-range perspective when it comes to issues today that we're facing with childcare and look at the impact that's going to have on us generations down the road.
Thank you, Katie. So my next question touches on an issue that you raised already, Kay, as you talked about sort of the poverty rate that we have in Blue River County. You know, you look around, we see that Blue River County is leading the state in a lot of sort of child growth metrics and economic growth metrics, but yet that poverty level does remain persistently high. And so I want you to talk about why you think that is and what are some of the solutions you think the county should bring to the table on that issue of poverty? I know we have a question from the audience here that relates to this, and the thing they talked about is childcare, which we just discussed, but they also talked about public transit, public transportation, and how that can help with that poverty issue. So if you could talk about poverty generally and then a little bit about how you do public transportation from the county perspective as being a solution for that. And we just finished our round, so I think we started again with Cameron.
All right. Well, thank you. I work for Express Employment Professionals. We had a lot of people coming in that relying on transportation, relying on people that they knew to work where they worked so that they could get there. That is not, you know, that's not the way to get to work. Carpooling, I think that we should, you know, come up with some carpool options, make that available to people that go to the same place. There's, you know, the bus only goes so far. We need to look at that as well, and I'd love to be on that committee, the Transit Committee. We need to, well, when I worked at Express, there's people that came in there and they get fired from their job because they couldn't get there or they couldn't get there on time. There's a lot of people that, like I said before, want to work that can't get to work, and they're stuck. And they feel stuck, and they need their self-worth back. I think that we could come up with some options with that, possible volunteers to start, you know, a program of volunteers that starts getting people to work, picking them up, picking them up for the morning and grabbing them back at when they get off work. I think that's one option. And we, you know, of course, as a team, could discuss, you know, some more options of how we're going to do that. There's a lot of people that don't want to be on the system. I talked about the welfare system or assistance from the county. They don't want to be on that. They want to work, they want to be proud and bring their own paycheck home. Talking about poverty, at-risk and homeless youth, we have, we need some more programs out there. We're feeding them, and we are, you know, we have a great program called The Reach. It's a drop-in center downtown Mankato, and they do wonderful things. But I think we need to do more. There needs to be a program that teaches skills so that they can, these youth aged 16 to 24 can be proud of themselves, get their self-worth, but they don't have the skills to go get a job. They don't even know how to get a job or look for a job. We need more programs that support them so that the poverty level can decline. There's approximately, from Tasha from The Reach, they have 130 open cases. Since they started in 2011, they have served 3,700 youth. They could, you know, people drop their donations off. They have, you know, computers there for them to be able to look for jobs. They also have meals. They have their own food shelf that the youth can come in and get. But I think that we need a program, a strict program that teaches them skills, and we need to open that up so that they can be successful adults.
Thank you, Cameron.
So poverty and why? That's a really tricky question. I think there's a lot that goes into that question, and we have to look at it in a few different ways. So I'm going to throw some numbers at you. 25% of household expenses in any household in Blue River County is transportation-related, which would equal out to about 52.2% of the household budget going to housing and transportation. So breaking that down, you've got about 30.3% of households in Blue River County that are cost-burden households, meaning that more than a third of their income is going to housing. When I was at United Way, I was a community impact director, and I was in charge of reviewing 64 different programs that were funded and supported through the business community. And the money raised each year would get allocated out to the different programs. And it was a big, giant collaborative effort between county, government, business, nonprofit, trying to meet the health and human service needs of people. And every year, the biggest key issues that would surface over and over again were affordable housing, transportation, and livable wage jobs. And those were not things that were easy for a nonprofit professional to talk about in the community because that directly relates to the business community. And so what I think we need to really be able to do is take a hard look at why. Why do we have a 15% poverty rate in Blue River County? Why is Blue River County rated at 83, ranked at 83 out of 87 counties when it comes to poverty in Blue River County? That's, that's not a number to be like happy about, right? Like, there's things that we can do to look at this. So when I talk about economic vitality, what I'm looking at is childcare is a workforce issue. Affordable housing is a workforce issue, right? When we talk about economy, it's not just GDP and business. It's not just economic growth and development. It's a whole entire ecosystem of different things that impact that. If families can't have an affordable home to live in, if they don't have food on the table, if they don't have a vehicle to get them from one job to the next, that's your why in poverty is here. So I think there's a lot that we can do to look at this, and I also love problem solving. So as a candidate, I'm like, I love these challenges because it's an opportunity for us to think about ways that we can build those partnerships and collaborations, leverage support from the business, government, and nonprofit sectors to be able to address the needs that address the poverty rate in our county and ensure that we have the systems and supports that we need so that all families can thrive in our region.
Housing, food, all of those are economic development. I mean, they are for our community. And there are some interesting things going on in Fairmont. Their high school is doing, partnering with SCC, I think it's SCC, one of, one of the technical colleges to do welding and that type of thing in high school to give kids a skill. Not everybody's supposed to go to college. And so how do you build those skills in while they're going to high school? And I think that's really important. I think those are some things that could really alleviate, to a certain extent, the poverty rate. One of the reasons that Blue River County's poverty rate is so high is we have a lot of college students, and that impacts the poverty rate. That's no excuse, don't get me wrong, but it does have an impact on the rate. So, well, we look at the numbers, they're horrible, but some of that is because of that. Also, we have a lot of hospitality jobs and jobs that don't pay very well. And we need to figure out how we can have jobs that pay. You're going to pay one way or the other. And so let's pay people to work those jobs as opposed to other ways of paying for people. I think that transit is critical. If you can't get to your job, if you can't get your child to daycare, if you live in one town, work in another, and have childcare in another, you have to have a way to get there. And lots of times, people on the lower-income levels don't have a reliable car to get them there. So how do we build that transit? The county board has stepped into that and done some really good partnering with transit, and I think it's something that will continue to grow. Also, when you look at seniors, they're not, many of them aren't driving anymore or maybe shouldn't. I think of my mother, who actually lived downtown St. Paul, and it was great. She lived in an apartment, she had a cab out front, and she could take the bus or light rail wherever she wanted. You can't do that in Mapleton. So how do we, how do we build those additional ways for people to get to doctor's appointments, to get to the grocery store, to get to the places they need to go to get to their jobs? I think transit's key. And, you know, people always talk about transit metro. There's a lot of transit in rural Minnesota, and we need to continue to build that.
So obviously, Blue River County is made up of an urban core and a whole lot of rural community. Obviously, you're running for an urban district, but it's important for the county that we balance the needs of both the urban center in Mankato and the rural communities in Blue River County. How do you view that, that sort of balance, that relationship, and the differences between those two segments of our county? And how do you, as a board member, address and make sure that both of those are right in fact? And I think we, sort of, Katie on this one.
I love building bridges. So when you talk about the rural-urban divide, you go to any of the Saul or surrounding communities and you watch how demographics are changing. We've got a lot of immigrant and refugee families moving in, starting businesses, working in different meat plants, getting their kids into ELL programs in local schools. We've got demographic changes happening in rural communities, and we also have that happening here in the rural core. And I think what we need to be able to do as a county is be able to work collaboratively with rural community leaders, both folks that are elected and just kind of natural leaders within those communities, to really get some voice and perspective brought to the table so that when we do make decisions that impact that kind of bridging process and being able to address an issue that hits both the urban core and the rural, that we have a really good understanding that this isn't just a cookie-cutter approach. Each community has a tremendous amount of strength and resiliency. There's a lot around agriculture also in our rural communities that I think we have a lot to learn from. A lot of the farmers that are there are starting to lose their land. There's a lot of dire straits and kind of mental health of the agricultural community right now as well with the stress level of different tariffs. So, I mean, like, if you want to go into the rabbit hole, it's pretty deep. And I think as a county commissioner, you have to be able to listen and learn and hear the voices and perspectives of people that are not in the urban core because Blue River County's budget isn't just for District One. It's not just for the urban core here. Our work and our services as a county impact all communities. And so there's a responsibility that you have in being able to be connected to the rural communities and have conversations at the dinner table with tea or coffee and actually get to chance to hear these stories and hear from the leaders themselves who are serving these communities and know them very well. I think one of the things that I really appreciate about rural communities and the ones that I've been connected to are that they're very, very closely knit. They all know each other, they all know the story, they all know what's going on. It's just hard to break in as an outsider coming in, and that's one of the gifts of being a county commissioner, is you're there to serve the entire county. And that's one of the things that I would look forward to doing if I, if we choose to elect you.
I've, I've always known that as a Blue River County Commissioner, you serve the whole, whole county. It's not just your district, it's the whole county. And there are many ways to do that. Mayors and clerks meet with the county board once a month to talk about issues and to talk about things that are going on, what's needed, and just that conversation. The county board goes around the county for various meetings. That's one thing about being a county commissioner is the actual board meeting is the smallest part of your job. You sit on a multitude of committees, childcare committees, human services, you name it, you're involved in that. The Children's Museum, I mean, it's, it's a broad spectrum of issues that cut across city lines, county lines, and river lines. We all work, we all work together to try to figure out how we can fulfill the needs and who are the best people to do that? Who can leverage those things? I always used to say when I was a county commissioner testifying that in Blue River County, I'm an urban commissioner. In the state of Minnesota, I represent a regional center. And in Washington, DC, I'm a small rural county. And, and it's true. I also started the Rural Caucus at the National Association of Counties. They'd always had a large urban county caucus, which is the 100 largest counties in the nation. They'd never had a rural caucus. I started that, and it's going strong today. And the whole goal of the Rural Caucus was to talk about issues that are important to rural communities and we're a rural community, no matter what anybody says, give commissioners good data so they can make good decisions and build those bridges between rural, urban, and suburban. It's the only way we're going to thrive, and we need to do that. So there's lots of ways to get input, and we're always looking for better ways and more additional ways to do that. This is one way to do this. You know, just having this group come here, it's on, going to be on TV. I keep telling him he should make me look thin, but I don't know if he's doing that. But it's, it's another way to get information out. One more thing, the intercity leadership visit. I was on the executive board for that when it started and until I went to USDA. And I think the best thing about that is you went to other communities to learn about things they were doing that were making a difference and figuring out how you could bring that home. That was really good, but the very best thing was you went with 70 other people from this community, a lot of them that you didn't know, and you built relationships that you never would have built any other way. When we were building the Justice Center, a gentleman who'd been on the trip with me called me, and he said, you know, I wouldn't have called you, but I met you on the intercity leadership visit. And he said, and I don't think you should build a justice center where you're building it. You should build it downtown because that's where it belongs. And so I explained to him why we were building it on the hill. We wanted it to be energy-efficient. We wanted to do geothermal to heat the building and cool the building, all those things, and you couldn't do it downtown. The end of our conversation was, well, I still think you're wrong, but I understand now. Thank you. Those are the things that make a difference. It's all those community connections that you get in so many different ways that build those bridges and give you the information in order to make good decisions.
Thank you. Communication, I would say, is probably the biggest key. Building those relationships, earning their trust, getting involved, putting yourself out there to the smaller communities around us and letting them know that we're here. We'd like to, you know, help with any issues or problems that they had. Like I said, building those relationships is very important. Gaining the trust, I think, is also another. If they don't, you know, trust doesn't come from the bigger city, Mankato, then that's, then that's, you know, an issue that's a barrier. They've got to be able to feel as if somebody is going out to bat for them. They need to feel confident that we have their best interests at, you know, and that their concerns have been heard, you know, that, that we're not going to forget, you know, about their issues and problems and use the board. You know, there's five commissioners on the board. Use them, bounce off any ideas. We have the administration and many supports within the county that we can also use to figure out how to collaborate with the smaller communities around us and how we can, you know, have that transportation and get them to work in Mankato, you know? That helps our sales taxes when we have, you know, people coming here and spending their money and, you know, going down to the local store. That benefits all of us. I think that that communication is probably the biggest key that we, that we should have.
Perfect. Thank you, Cameron. Let's go to an audience question here. So the questioner asks, as the parent of two children with developmental disabilities, I would like to hear your thoughts on current transition services offered to those aging out of the school system. What will you do to continue to support and advocate for the large disabled community that resides in our county? And I think we're starting with Colleen.
I can't remember. I'll take your word for it. That is, excuse me, that is an issue. You know, aging out and then all of a sudden, what do you do? I think there are some services, certainly not enough. And, you know, with the developmental disability legislation right now, they just got a 7% cut in providers, for providers starting July 1st. How do we fill that? How do we get the services that are needed by that population? What can we do to make sure that they can keep their jobs? Because with the 7% cut, people who were working in jobs that are low-functioning to a certain extent, the business can't afford to pay them minimum wage, excuse me, and pay for their job coach. So they're going to lose their jobs. And there's nothing that makes them feel worse than not being a contributing member of society. They love their jobs. They should be able to keep their jobs, and we have to figure out, as a community, what do we want to, how do we fix this? How do we work with people so everybody can be, have a job, be a contributing member of society, and work together to make people feel that they're valued and they're needed? So I'm real concerned about that 7% cut to providers. And on top of that, the providers get a 7% cut, but people who work providing services... cut, but people who work providing services can make more money working at McDonald's. Not that I don't love Jerry Bambarry and McDonald's, but, you know, those are tough jobs. And they can make more money working at McDonald's, and it's an easier job. So we need to figure out how we can pay those people who work with developmentally disabled people. I, I think it's tough, but I think there are ways to do that, and a lot of it's got to do with partnerships. And how do we train people so that they can work at a job that is a little higher-functioning sometimes? And the people who are high-functioning are probably going to be okay with the WIA stuff, W-I-A. I'm never sure how to pronounce that. But there, there are going to be some people who really fall through the cracks, and we need to figure out how to help those people so that they can feel valued and be, feel that they're really a good member of this community. Thank you. Can I give you a repeat thank?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate that.
All right. So the question is, "As the parent of two children with developmental disabilities, I would like to hear your thoughts on the current transition services offered to those aging out of the school system, and what will you do to continue to support and advocate for the large disabled community that resides in our county?"
Thank you. So I'm in that boat right now. I have a 17-year-old son who will graduate West High School at the end. That question has come up in our lives in the last year. West has open enrollment till the age of 21. We don't have a lot of great transitional services here like the city does. I get a lot of my information from the Autism Society of America in Minnesota. I use them as a resource. I use Pacer as a resource. MRCI is, you know, a great source for us in this community, for the, you know, anyone with a, you know, disability or special needs. I think that there's a large number here, and like I said, we have a lack of programs here for people with disabilities. And I think that although MRCI and the other, like, Smiles is the other one that you can sign up and, you know, your children, and they have information there. That's a good source. But I think most of our sources are really coming from the cities. And I would think, you know, that that's a problem here for us. I'm facing it with my son. It's like, okay, you're going to turn 18. What, you can be in high school till you're 21? He doesn't want to do that, you know? He certainly doesn't want to be, you know, with peers that, that are, you know, a lot younger than him. That doesn't make him feel his self-worth. He doesn't, you know, feel good about that. So, you know, he's kind of struggling with that. We're struggling with that in our home right now. So that is something that we need to take a, a good look at. Like I said, there's a lack of that for the transition services here. And, and we need to face that.
So I am a little familiar around this. I have a friend with a, a son with a severe disability that we actually just were talking about this transition from school into workforce. And the concern that this mother had was looking at, well, is it that, like, once this, once my son's done with school, that then he's, like, guaranteed to work for a very low wage packing chicken? And that's a hard question to hear from a mom when she knows that her son has much more potential than that. I think we have a lot of really great resources in our community. Again, when I was at, United Way, we, we funded a lot of the programs at MRCI, at LEAP, Smiles. So I've seen a lot of these different programs, which is, I think, why we have such a strong population here, is because we have such a rich service program area in all the different facets of that. But the transition piece is one that is concerning, and I think this is one where we would need to start to build some social infrastructure in being able to connect parents of special-needs kids, special ed kids, whatever kind of language you want to use around that, and start to help parents understand that they're not alone in this, and have the county maybe potentially be an advocate for helping to share information and resources more broadly through a parent-to-parent connection and network. That's something that's really, really lacking in that area, and I've heard it over and over again, not only from parents of children with special needs and special ed children, but also from people themselves who are at Durham Apartment Building right now. This is where we launched the campaign that I was running on. And I think there's a lot of high-potential, high talent that's stuck and that being always seen as, well, you're a person with disabilities, therefore this is the only place where you can work. And as a job coach, I used to work at LifeWorks. I was a job coach helping to train people with disabilities on how to clean the Holiday Inn. And that was a lot of fun. And you think about, like, where their level of ability is at, and you try to get them an opportunity to grow and expand their talent and potential, and you see them grow and thrive and feel good and valuable about how they're functioning and working. And they get the paycheck that they deserve, and they feel good about it. Like, like, I think that we need to look at this transition issue in one of social infrastructure and really helping to connect parent-to-parent connections and really have the county potentially be an advocate and a resource for education and referral.
Thank you, Katie. All right, next question. So the county builds a lot of things. What do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in the county or in your district? Anything that sort of rises to the top of your, you've maybe heard door knocking, that the county would need to address from your perspective? And we'll start, I think, with who did send it?
You started with me.
So we started with you. All right. So we come back. Start with Tamara.
Well, that is an interesting question that I have a lot more to learn about. I, you know, I didn't hear a lot about those sorts of things as I was door-knocking. They were mainly talking about, you know, some of the issues that, that we've already discussed here tonight. So it is a topic that I really have to, you know, talk with other community members and the board and the county about what is the biggest need that there is. I don't know the answer to that question.
All right. So, yes, the county does build a lot of things. And as you heard Colleen mention, the Justice Center is an amazing building. It's amazing facility. The green building practices that were used to create that. And then we have the new building going in where the government center is located on Fifth Street. I don't, like, when you're door-knocking, people aren't thinking about what the county infrastructure building needs are. Sorry, it's the truth. They're really thinking about my life and how the county government impacts my life. They're not thinking about the capacity of what's needed, right? But in conversation with Drew, actually, County Commissioner for District One currently, there's, there's a need for expansion already within the Justice Center, right? So like, there's information that I would love to learn more about, about what we're seeing and hearing as the needs and infrastructure building that, like, for the county to be able to provide the best services possible. What does that look like and what are the needs? What is the truth on that? And what can we do to look at efficiently and effectively creating the, the capacity that's needed so that we can take some of the waitlists down, we can address some of the needs in the backlog, we can make sure that there's plenty of courtrooms, we can make sure that there's plenty of space for the services and the programs and the offerings to be able to provide efficiently and effectively. So I don't have a lot of information on that, other than, yes, it's exciting that we have new buildings coming up. They're beautiful, fantastic buildings. I'm excited to see what the next government center is going to look like. And I think we need to have, I need more information before I can really clearly answer it, because door-knocking, I'm not hearing it.
So beyond buildings, and one of those, Tamara does a lot on, is transportation, right? That roads and bridges, that's a huge movement for the county. And so, I think, maybe, Tamara, Katie, any, beyond sort of buildings, anything you're hearing about roads and trails or anything like that that are, that are right on the top of your, or maybe your perspective on transportation, how the county ought to be playing with?
Well, the bridges, if, if anything I've heard is to keep our, you know, our bridges safe and our roads, you know, without cloud walls. I mean, that's important. You know, I, I think that's probably what I've heard the most is, is keeping our bridges safe.
We have a lot of miles of county road.
Yes.
And I, we have actually family that lives out right off of 68. And so in that whole remodel, redesign, restructuring of that road, they were kind of like, hmm. And I know that the county's been listening a lot to the folks and getting input on that. I think that we have a lot of resources and a lot of great collaboration when you look at the Highway 14 issues that are on connecting basically Highway 14 from New Ulm to Rochester. You look at local county roads. You look at roads and bridges and ditches, which is what most people think county commissioners solely focus on. I would be looking at the leadership that we've had in this, this seat, in this position, and the leadership that's been brought to the table and the collaborations that have been formed to help address transportation infrastructure needs. And I would be standing on the shoulders of those folks as I begin to navigate that as, as the potentially next county commissioner with that. It is a huge need. The infrastructure and the costs of that are tremendous, which comes back to that whole, like, fiduciary responsibility, balancing the budget, and making sure we've got what we need to be able to continue to provide infrastructure support, not only just physically, but also socially as well.
Colleen, county infrastructure, all this form.
Okay. Well, the big thing right now, as we all know, is that addition that's going on to the government center. And I, I know that a lot of work has gone into that, and it's really important. But if you talk about transportation and infrastructure, it's really something that is critical to workforce, to economic development, to everything that we deal with. If you can't get there from here, it's not going to work. So we've always been really fortunate. We've had great county engineers who, you know, check out the pavement, check out the bridges, make sure that what needs to be done is done. And we phase it over a five-year, we have a five-year plan that actually lays out what's going to happen with, now, if a bridge falls down, something changes. I mean, you know, it's not written in stone, but it's darn close. That's really important. But there's also, with infrastructure, with transportation, an ability that, to use federal dollars and state dollars. And so lobbying the federal government and the state government as to infrastructure that's important to us. We did CASA 90, which is, you know, the one that kind of goes around the city. We never had an east-west road that way. I actually testified and lobbied Congress for insertion into the Surface Transportation Bill. We got, I think, $12 million to do that bill, to do that, that didn't go on your property taxes. It was all federal money. People say, "But I pay taxes." Well, that federal money's going somewhere, so it might as well come to Mankato, to Blue Earth County. That's my theory. So we did that, the extension on Victory, the bridge that takes out Menards and that area. I got that in the next transportation bill. And so I think we got about 20, $22 million from the federal government to build those roads. Now, my problem was I taught other people how to do that. Should have never done it. But it's, it's important to, you know, look at your partners with some of the infrastructure. We know that property taxes will pay a lot of it, but the federal government and the state government have a huge part to play in this. And we have to have good infrastructure. Farm-to-market, getting customers into Blue Earth County to buy, sell, everything like that, and just the normal workforce things that you need to do to get around town, to get around the county, to get to North Mankato. It's really important. So infrastructure, it's usually human services. Infrastructure's the next one, and it goes down from there as to where things are in the budget. Really important. Water waste, water wastewater. I mean, whoever thought I'd know that much about that? But that's a critical component. Lake Washington, other lakes, where making sure that the wa, it's clean water, and that's important.
Thank you, Colleen. I know this should have been brought up a little bit already tonight, but dealt a little bit more into it. That is immigration. Obviously, Blue Earth County is, is getting a lot more immigrants. County, Black County, they're providing a key part of our workforce in terms of continuing to grow our businesses here in, in Blue Earth County. But from your perspective, running for county board, what do you see the role of the, of the county be in terms of welcoming these immigrants and ensuring that they can be successful in, in, in our county and in, in the workforce here? I think we start with Katie.
All right. So I have a biased perspective on this. I have had a lot of experience in working on integration with 34 different communities across the country around immigrant and refugee integration into communities. And so when I was, when I had Envision Lab, it was a small coworking space, and we worked a lot with the immigrant community in helping to provide entrepreneurial startup support for them. So when I think about, like, the population demographics and how much that's changed, like, as a little girl, I remember the first person of color entering my school in sixth grade, right? And I always have, like, diversity everywhere in our grocery stores, in places of faith, in places of neighborhoods, in places of buildings and structures, all that fun stuff. So I see it as an asset, and I see it as an opportunity for our community to understand what can the county do to help ensure that the families that are new Americans coming in have a place where they belong and can contribute. I think the, the narrative right now around immigration is one where they are takers and they take, blah, 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 like, all of that stuff, which I don't think is true. They're not there to kind of take services and only do that. They are here to contribute, and they want a sense of the longing. And I think the county has a role in being able to do that and providing employment services, workforce development opportunities, skill-based development, those types of things, and not just kind of putting them on to kind of assembly lines where you don't have to speak English to, to cut up a pig. Like, I think there's opportunities beyond that and skills and talents that they bring that we don't always see when we kind of just think of it as, like, oh, they're here and they use the services that we can provide them based off their income and da, 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 da. I think it's like, if we have a kind of asset-based approach of what are the strengths and talents that they're bringing with them, in addition to the needs that they're, they're facing as they integrate in, and how do we, as a county, create a place where people belong and can contribute to the community and help strengthen the regional economic vitality of our area?
Thank you.
Well, I agree with Katie. And I'm, I'm proud of the way our community has become so diverse. I think that's really important. I think it's important for all of us to learn from each other and teach each other. I think there are great opportunities for all of us to live together and thrive and grow. And it's important that we become a welcoming community and that we think about what it would be like if we were one of the new immigrants, and how we would feel, and how would we want to be treated. I think we have opportunities. I think there are a lot of different groups that are trying to help that assimilation. And I think, how do we partner with that? For instance, SEC is going to do Somali language. That's exciting. And so, you know, how do we build on that? How do we think about other languages than English? I remember being in China, and for the first time, I realized what it must feel like to be illiterate. I couldn't read the street signs. I had no idea where I was, and there were people everywhere crowding in on me. Think what it's like for someone who has lived in another country, spoken a language that is not spoken here, and trying to figure out how they're going to take care of their family and how they're going to thrive and grow. I think our communities have the great opportunity to be welcoming and to lift all boats. And that's what I see our community doing.
All right, thank you. I think the first thing we should do is smile. Introduce yourself, you know? Be friendly. Be open to the diversity and the other cultures that are here. Both our colleges, which we should be promoting, and we can do that at the county or city as, level as well, is promoting, you know, the different cultures and the different teachings that the colleges do. They get together. They, they take all of the different cultures that we have here, and they put on, like, plays, or they have food, you know, trying different foods from different countries, understanding on what their backgrounds are. I mean, they're just like us. What's their difference, you know, between them and us? We want the same thing as they do. They want a healthy family. They want somewhere to work. They want to feed their own families. You know, they want to live and be happy, just like every one of us. And I think just being more open and to learning about the different, you know, cultures and community, that, that's a good start. We want everybody to work here. We want everybody to be happy, and we want everybody to thrive. When everybody thrives, we all thrive. And that is, and I think that's important. It is.
Thank you. All right, we'll do one more question, then we'll do our closing statements and let our candidates make the case for why they think the rest of the job. This might be a quick one, we'll see, but is there any recent decision by the current Board of Commissioners that you particularly disagree with or agree with, and what is that decision and why?
Is it me? Okay. I'm excited about the daycare. I think it was a wonderful first step to help with childcare in this county. It's really important for economic development in our county and for the well-being of families. And so, congratulations. I think that was a great decision. I think that was a great decision.
I'm sorry, I was so excited.
She had her answer. You know, I, I haven't heard of a commissioner making a bad decision, you know? So from there, I just wanna say, like she said, you know, the, the childcare and the, the concern about that and how it's being brought to the table and talked about. And I think that is one of our, one of our issues that we need to get our families back to work. And I think I applaud that for coming to the table and, and the degree that it is, so.
Katie, thank you.
You'll never guess what my response is gonna be. It's the Childcare Forgiveness Loan Program that y'all just made the decision on for the Eagle Lake childcare family that is now able to expand and open up those slots. That, to me, is an effort to help strengthen and enhance economic vitality in our region. And I would love to be able to see more and more of that kind of innovative kind of approach to things and looking at how could we be a partner in problem-solving in this issue that's so complex, that impacts so many families and impacts our workforce? And so I just wanna say kudos to all of you who voted in support of that, which was all of you. And I'm really excited to continue to see more opportunities like that for the county to be innovative and collaborative and stepping in in new ways and finding new opportunities to be able to leverage the resources you have, both federally, statewide, and locally. So that was really, really exciting to see.
Thank you. All right, let's move to our closing statements. I need you to get two minutes to make that final case for why you're best for the job. And since we've been having Katie in the middle all night, so let's start with Katie, then we'll go to Colleen and finish with Cameron.
All right. So as I mentioned, I'm Katie Boone, running for Blue Earth County Commissioner, District One. Usually how I introduce myself to groups that I'm hosting or facilitating is I'll say, I was born in a river gorge and I grew up in a river valley. I've grown up in this region all my life. I've paid attention very closely to the changing demographics, the changing landscape, the new developments, the new families coming in, the growth of our community, of our region, and also paying attention to what the needs are and the shifts and the changes and the challenges that we're facing, as well as all the opportunities we have as a region to continue to strengthen our vitality. And so I think one of the things that I really am most excited about with the opportunity to serve as a county commissioner at this point in my life is I am bringing the 17 years of experience and working in all the different areas that I've worked in as an opportunity to be able to serve in public office. I would be so greatly honored to be able to do that. I bring a lot of kind of entrepreneurial, creative, problem-solving mindset to things. In my early conversation with Bob, before we got started, I was like, so, the state sets the sandbox guidelines and we figure out how we play within the sandbox, right? So I try to find new strategies while staying within the parameters and guidelines and regulations and laws that you're supposed to do as a locally elected official. So, again, the key issues that I'm looking at are working for ways to kind of leverage community health workers as a service provider within Blue Earth County to be able to meet community needs where community needs are. And also focusing on economic vitality and really looking at ways to help strengthen childcare, affordable housing, and transportation. As a millennial, I'm bringing a fresh perspective. I'm bringing a fresh voice. I'm bringing new ideas, new strategies, and a new mindset to county government that I don't think we've seen yet in Blue Earth County. We've had peaks of it here and there. And I would be excited to be able to contribute my time, talent, and energy to be of service as your next county commissioner for District One.
I'm Colleen Langkammer, and I'm also running for the first district. To me, it's all about partnerships. It's how do we work together? How do we build those bridges across cities, counties, townships? How do we work not only in Blue Earth County, but in the state of Minnesota and at the federal level? And how do we work across this nation? How do we learn from others that have the same issues, but the solutions are a bit different? So what can we learn and what can we bring back to Blue Earth County? I've lobbied Congress. I've lobbied the legislature. I've advocated for issues that are important to Blue Earth County. I've been on a multitude of boards, commissions, and various places around this country talking about things that are important to Blue Earth County. I ran for the Association of Minnesota's Counties President so I could bring Blue Earth County's issues to the state. I ran for the National Association of Counties President because then I could bring them to the federal level. It's a voice that I brought to the county board and it's something that I would bring back. Since I'm a past president, I go back on the state association board. I go back on the national association board. There have been two presidents of the National Association of Counties out of Minnesota. Me and Randy Johnson, who was a Hennepin County Commissioner. It's a big deal. And I was lucky to do it. I got support from my board to do that. But it brings Blue Earth County's issues to a larger audience and you have more people to work on issues that are important to us in Blue Earth County and help us solve some of those issues and those challenges that we see each and every day. So, partner, 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 partner. That's my goal. I've got the energy, I've got the enthusiasm, I've got the experience. And I'd really appreciate it if you would give me the opportunity to serve you in Blue Earth County. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, there's three strong women here running for the same position. So that in itself is a wonderful thing.
Yep.
I, I want this position. I wanna be able to serve my, my community. I wanna help nourish the community that we've helped build together while working towards fiscally responsible ways in building and maintaining a healthy community, or healthy community goals. I have experience, you know, being a single mother of three children, one which has a disability, and being very thrifty and knowing where that money needs to go and where the important part of where that money needs to go. I, my vision is just simply this. I wanna make sure everyone that has a concern can voice that concern, can feel confident that somebody is listening to them and that somebody has their back. I think that is, I'm relatable and I'm approachable. I'm competent and I'm ready to work hard for my community and working hard towards supporting our community members with struggling with addiction, mental health issues, and other social issues. From experience, I wanna make sure that our county keeps strict on making sure anyone owing child support is paying their child support. And if they're not paying their child support, there'll be appropriate consequences to that. I'm familiar with our local resources and I'll be able to direct, help direct people to where, where their needs are. I'm not a big name. I'm not wealthy. I don't need the name recognition. But I do want the position. I want to make sure that my boys and my neighbors are, you know, get what, get what they need. I'm Tamara Hanson. Vote on February, or February, August 14th.
And you can vote early, right now at the courthouse on second floor.
Right now, you're right, Colleen.
Great, and we'll hopefully see you all next week, Wednesday, for the City Menfeo Forum. But let's give these three wonderful women a fantastic evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.